Before we begin tonight's meeting, and you know, we do... Before we begin tonight's meeting, we do value our public input and our public comment period. Unfortunately, our public comment period is only for an hour. And so, we will have to limit the amount of speakers to cover that hour. And we also will be limited the amount of time that people will be speaking. So, we know, we respect everyone's passion for their subjects. But it would help other people who might want to speak on a different subject. If certain, if you are all here speaking on the same issue, that some people might say, hey, you know, I'll pass on this, I'll let someone else speak about. Because right now, we're over the limit. And public comment period is only for an hour. So, we just want people to be mindful of that. You will be limited to three minutes when we do start that process. Okay? We're gonna call into order Albany Common Council Meeting, Monday, March 2nd, 2020. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani. Ballerin. Conti. Doschet. Fahey. Farrell. Flynn. Frederick. Hoey.
President.
Igo. Johnson. Kimbrough.
Here.
Love. O'Brien.
Here.
Robinson. Eleven present, four absent.
The guy who said me, and say the pledge of allegiance, and after the pledge of allegiance, we'll have a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now move on to our public comment period, portion of the meeting. Each speaker, once again, you will have three minutes to talk about any subject you'd like to talk about. When you come to the table, please state your name and your address for the record. Only address myself as Mr. President or Mr. Chairman. The council members at this time cannot respond to your public comments. This is your time to speak, so please don't ask them any questions, and they won't respond. But at a later time during the meeting, council members, if they choose to do so, will respond. So, keep that in mind when you are speaking. And once again, you know, we have limited the number of speakers because we would run out of our time. So, and we know people are passionate about what they want to say, but because we limit the number of speakers, it's going to be really difficult to hear from other people. So, if you choose not to speak, please let us know, so we can slot someone else in that seat. So, with that being said, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Marlin Anderson, to be followed by Ashar Attar.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the public. For those who do not know, my name is Marlin Anderson, community advocate in the city of Albany, former mayor candidate in the city of Albany. I currently reside at 214 Lark Street, apartment 2A in the Center Square region of the city of Albany. I've come forward to speak about the ongoing issue regarding what's going on in the West Hill section of the city at, with the pursuit of coding a business, a nuisance property, and trying to shut the business down. I was hoping that Councilman Robinson would be here to hear my comments, but no matter, leadership is here, so I will address it to them. Again, I monitored the situation at the meeting that was held on Henry Johnson last week. I couldn't attend, but I certainly will be at the last, at the next one. And I like to put forward to this council, again, it is a prime example of lack of focus and lack of focus on the issue at hand. Again, the store didn't kill anyone. The store did not kill anyone, the business did not kill anyone. It was the loitering that killed anyone. And while we're focused on this intense effort to close the business, the killer of my cousin is still at large. The killer of my cousin still has not been caught. People are still losing their lives on the city of Albany. Shooting is still happening on every street corner in the city of Albany. And if you're gonna code Delaware Grocery a nuisance property, you could do that on many properties in city Albany, particularly beyond the street where I reside. There are businesses there that have a massive problem with loitering. As we well know, we had a major meeting in that area over the summer about the issue of loitering. Are we gonna call those businesses nuisance properties as well? Again, the issue here is not the building or the business. The issue is the loitering that has long, too long festered in this city.
One minute remaining, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you very much. Loitering that is costing people's lives in this city. I have come forward to this office again and again, and I will continue to come forward to try to advance you to pursue an anti-loitering ordinance in this city. Because that is the answer to the problem, not closing businesses. An anti-loitering ordinance in this city will be a life-saving piece of legislation. And right now, we're just waiting to see which legislator has the courage to advance this legislation that I put forward on the table. Because that's what it takes, courage and leadership. Who's gonna be a leader? Who's gonna step forward and save these lives that are being lost? Summer is coming. As they say in the Game of Thrones, winter is coming. Well, in Albany, summer is coming, and it's gonna be a red summer unless we do something about it.
Time's up.
Anti-loitering, now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can clerk please call the next speaker?
Ashar Attar, followed by Sana Savadi.
Good evening. My name is Ashar Attar, and I reside at 11 Forest Avenue, Cohoes. Honorable President, Honorable Councilmember Alfredo Ballerin. The Muslim community of Albany and the wider capital district thanks you for introducing the resolution. On December 11th, 2019, the Indian Parliament passed a Nuremberg-type citizenship law that discriminates against and disenfranchises the minorities, especially the Muslims. At the previous council meeting, just two weeks ago, some of us talked about an impending genocide and detention camps as a consequence of this law passed in India. We did not expect our fears to start manifesting so quickly. In the last five days, the capital of India, New Delhi, witnessed an unleashing of a pogrom against the Muslims by Hindu extremists while President Trump was on official visit to India. The level of violence supported and perpetrated by the state machinery on the streets of Delhi was a reminder of a similar violence against the Sikhs in 1994, against the Muslims in 2002. The involvement and complicity of our Prime Minister Narendra Modi in Gujarat in 2002 was the basis of the denial of his US visa in 2005. Prime Minister Modi remains the only person ever to be banned to travel to the United States of America under the International Religious Freedom Act. I'm paraphrasing the words of Robert A. Pape, a professional, a professor of political science and university of Chicago. Since the United States adopted a genocide convention in the wake of the Holocaust, world leaders have failed to prevent the deaths of millions from Bafra and Cambodia to Rwanda and Darfur, not just because they have lacked the political will to intervene, but also because of the norm of genocide itself. By setting the bar for intervention too high, the international community has stuck itself in a catch-22. By the time it is clear the genocide is occurring, it is often too late to stop it. In the past few decades, the United States and other countries have successfully intervened for humanitarian purposes on the three, on three occasions. In 1991, against Saddam Hussein, when he attempted the massacre of the Kurds. And 1993, in Bosnia, and 1999, the Kosovars. All three humanitarian interventions occurred after thousands of people had been killed and many more had been injured or displaced. And all three of them were successful and saved thousands of lives. None of these cases amounted to a true genocide, where hundreds of thousands were already dead at the time of intervention. Most importantly, none could become a genocide because intervention stopped the killing at an earlier stage. Honorable council members, believe me and take pride when I say that by passing this resolution, history will remember this city among those who took the first step towards stopping the next genocide in a country that's thousands of miles away from here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Sana Savadi, followed by Said Zaher.
Good evening, Mr. President and honorable council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Sana Savadati. I'm a New York State government employee, and I live in the city of Rensselaer. I'm here today on behalf of my fellow countrymen and women from India who reside in your wards and call New York home. I'm here today on behalf of my friends who are facing the wrath of the Indian government because they are Muslim. I'm here today because I fear for India and agonize about the fascist path it has been on for some years now, under the current ruling party, the BJP, led by Prime Minister Narendra Modi. Every day, I hear horrific stories from India of systematic state-sponsored violence, police brutality, and anti-Muslim discrimination. What do you do when your country of birth, and we call her Mother India, rejects you? Where do you go when the country you've loved and cherished all your life and is meant to be your safe haven denounces your very existence? I see my friends shed tears, and I sense their deep anguish and fear. I am anguished too, but my despair does not compare. You see, I'm a Hindu, and my gods are approved by the current ruling party of India. And so, in a pro-Hindu and anti-Muslim environment, I stand privileged. I am safe in the new India. I can walk its streets today, unafraid of being lynched by an angry Hindu mob in broad daylight. I can walk out the door in the morning, knowing I will return home to my family, safe and alive. This benefit does not extend to my Muslim friends in the new India. The Citizenship Amendment Act and the National Registration of Citizens passed by the Indian government in December 2019 will not haunt me like they haunt my Muslim brothers and sisters. Unlike them, I will never be asked to produce papers to prove my allegiance and my citizenship to my country of birth. What a terrible and shameful privilege I have. Tonight, I request the honorable members of the Albany Common Council to support the resolution to oppose the Indian Citizenship Amendment Act and the National Registration of its citizens. This resolution may be symbolic, but it will reaffirm our convictions as we continue to fight injustice in these dark and uncertain times. New York State and Capitol District have been our home away from home, and for that, we will forever be grateful. I request you all to please stand by us and with us. Thank you for your time.
Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Said Zaher, followed by Vazir Patha.
Good evening, honorable council members and everybody who have worked hard and spoke up for the people who don't have voice. I wanted to just give a different narrative, so people understand what we are talking. My name is Said Zahur. I'm from 280 Central Avenue, represent the mosque. So, I want to basically rhetorically ask a question to everybody. You don't have to answer. I know what you would all would answer. But I would still just bring it up here to demonstrate what exactly is going on in India. Let's say if you all elected a government from either party, either Republican or Democrat, and you choose a president. That president, one fine day, after taking over as the president of USA, he goes to White House, and the next day, he announces two laws. The first law states that every living person in USA have to prove your citizenship with your birth certificate and your parents' birth certificates, that your genealogy and lineage belongs to this place. If you cannot prove, you will be a stateless refugee in USA, and you will be sent to detention centers, which is same as the Nazi concentration camp. The second law that president would pass, this is a hypothetical situation I'm saying, the second law that the president would pass, that a new immigration policy where he will say, he or she will say, all faith groups and all religions are allowed to come to USA except the people who are identified as Muslims. This is exactly the law that is passed in India. This is exactly, this is to give a very good demonstration. Now, but here is the irony. So, in a democracy, citizens elect and choose a government. But then, right after that government is elected, the same government is saying to the people who they have voted and elected to power, that the government will now choose among the people who have voted, that who will be among you is a citizen, or who will be among you is not a citizen. This is basically fascism under the garb and disguise of democracy. This is exactly what we are talking about is going on in India. This is how things have been working in India right now. Now, just to let you know, just to let you know, there's a peace and love are contagious, but unfortunately, hatred is also contagious. We have seen extreme right-wing ideologies spinning around and evolving in different parts of the world, and at the top of the foot chain is hatred, is through the fascism and majoritarianism and autocracy, which is showing as Jim Crow laws in US, coming to Nazi Germany, Holocaust, to the massacre in Bosnia, currently going on in Burma and China, and now the beginning of genocide in India. They all learn from each other, improvise, sometimes they call it as largest democracy also. Nazi and Hitler admired Jim Crow laws, and Hitler improvised on Jim Crow to become Nuremberg's laws to eliminate Jews. RSS ideologues admired Hitler in 1930s and 40s, and Mr. Modi became the current leader and Prime Minister, and he passed the CAA and NRC laws in India. This has to be condemned.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk calls next speaker?
Alana Klein.
Alana Klein, 29 Glenwood, 12208, now 12203. I'll try to keep this short, as I know a lot of people are here to speak on other issues. First, I would like to support Mr. Ballerin's resolution opposing the registry in India. Also, at the end of this month, on March 31st, there's a day called Transgender Day of Visibility. I know you may not be familiar with that, but it's essentially if you took Gay Pride Month and narrowed it down to one day and focus exclusively on visibility and support for the transgender community, that's what March 31st is every day, or every year. And I would appreciate the support of the common council if for next meeting, someone in the council could draft a resolution for Albany to formally support recognition of this day. Just as a sign of opening, open welcoming to the LGBTQ community. Last year, there was the transgender pride flag flying at City Hall. That was my direct request to the mayor. I hand-delivered her a letter, and that was actually my personal transgender pride flag flying on March 31st, so that was pretty cool. I plan on delivering a similar letter to her this year, but regardless of that, if one of you could draft a resolution and have it ready for next meeting to be voted on, that would be appreciated. You'll have my email, so if someone could reach out to me, I would appreciate it. For these survivors, Boycott the Unright, Black Lives Matter, Assalamu alaikum.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Attar Ashar, followed by Charles Obor Robinson. Charles Obor Robinson.
Is he out there? Is he out in the hall? Oh, there he is.
Charles Obor Robinson, 404 Livingston Avenue, born and raised, right here in the city of Albany. Family go back over a hundred and something years right here in the city of Albany. I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna say too much, 'cause... But I'm gonna say a lot. 'Cause I heard something when they said, "Home away from home." Well, this is my home. But for a long time, since this administration came in, this mayor, the previous administration put me in jail, my whole family in jail, we came home, we survived that. What we were put in jail for is, you know, everybody's getting paid, it's legal now, this is nutty, but this is reality right now. First and Lex belong to us. Listen, it belongs to us. Please, you're inviting everybody here, no, you got the whole city offering that. Everything on First and Lex belongs to us, and we're gonna procure this soon. If it does not get procured soon, it's gonna be a problem. And I'm here to let every one of you know, no, the buck stops here. No, no, no. I have a family to raise too. I have a culture to ensure that I pass off too. I'm about to be 60 years old, 60, and my eyes done seen a lot, and I done endured a lot in this city for a long time. And it's gonna stop. I'm not yelling anymore. I'm too educated to you. I got a degree from SUNY at New Paul's, class of 83, business administration, they never let, you never allowed me to do anything in this, everything I ever tried, every ideal I ever presented got stolen, ideal theft. Skyway, Gondola, Land Bank. The Land Bank, you remember that, Mr. Ellis? My ideal conceived from this mine. The Gondola, the friend, the gentleman that gave me that ideal, he just passed away. And I'm here to ensure that he gets his due respect for that ideal that got stolen from me from Albany County. But look, it's about First and Lex. I am developing that.
You have one minute remaining, Mr. Robinson.
I am developing that. I am. And I'm getting some assistance from the city and the county. You have a lot of money now. Leah James money, no, you passing off to West Hill, finally, finally, okay? We're gonna, yo, listen, seriously, common council, schedule a meeting outside of here for First and Lex, so that you can see with your own eyes, 'cause seeing is believing. You understand? It was a war zone that I, that we endured, that nobody wanted. Now, everybody wants it. Okay, no, all right? Seriously, I'm not yelling anymore. I'm protecting, and I'm making sure, it's called economic injustice that's been going on in this village for a long time, economic inequity. How do you expect us to keep up with anything when you never, you never gave us the employment or the opportunity to do nothing?
Time is up, Mr. Robinson, thank you.
No, time just started. It ain't up, Mr. Ellis. It's just starting.
Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Said Asima, followed by Carol Tainsey.
So, everybody come, just understand, First and Lex belong to us. Try to settle.
Good evening. My name is Asima Saidah. I'm a resident of 38 Batshun Place, Albany. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Indian-American community residing in Albany, who are against the CAA Citizenship Amendment Act, a discriminatory law passed by the Indian government in December 2019. Similar to the Nazi Nuremberg laws, India's CAA, along with National Register of Citizens, NRC, creates a religious-based criteria to denaturalize not only 200 million Muslims of India, but also the poor and other minorities who will be rendered stateless and put into huge detention camps that are being built at a fast pace. Peaceful protests across India have faced brutal retribution from police and local goons under government's direction. A totalitarian regime has now engulfed the country with outbreaks of violence manufactured by the government. Mass-level genocide is being planned in India, and as we speak, major riots against Muslims in Delhi is happening that started during President Donald Trump's visit to India's capital, Delhi. Muslim neighborhoods are being specifically targeted for official vandalism and destruction. This is a reminder of the state of Gujarat riots in 2002, under Mr. Modi's governance, where thousands of Muslims were killed and women raped. Victims have been unable to register police cases, and perpetrators of the violence are often rewarded with political appointments. It therefore falls on us, the Indian diaspora, to tell their stories, to let the world know about the injustice and the systematic persecution that is leading the world's so-called largest democracy into a state of anarchy and lawlessness. The BJP government headed by Prime Minister Narendra Modi is backed by a Hindu supremacist group called RSS. The founders of RSS are inspired by the Nazis, and their aim is to establish a Hindu nation based on an upper caste system. The international wing of RSS is making inroads in US and peddling fascist ideology by contributing to political campaigns and hosting events at government offices, including congressmen and law enforcement departments. As part of an immigrant community, we appreciate the inclusivity of the city of Albany, which has provided us this platform to sound the alarm. The global progressive community needs to stand in solidarity with the victims of religious violence and the protests in India, which are calling for a full repeal of these laws. And we thank you, dear Albany council members, for standing with us and for letting the world know that as Americans, we will always raise our voices against any injustice that occurs, whether it be local or global in impact. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Carol Tainsey, followed by Nancy Benedict.
My name is Carol Tainsey. I live in Albany, New York. I'm going to speak on community...
Can you speak up a little bit, ma'am, so we can hear you?
I'm gonna speak to community choice aggregation. Electricity accounts for 19% of New York State's carbon emissions. CCA, that is, community... Congregate aggregation is a path to significantly reduce our greenhouse gas emissions with 13 municipalities participating. That's over 90,000 customers. CCA will feature a fixed-rate, multi-year contract with National Grid. Clean energy can be purchased... Clean energy can be purchased at a competitive price and available local, local energy sources can create clean energy jobs. And this local bond with our neighbors can forge future initiatives to collectively reduce carbon emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Nancy Benedict followed by Reyes Shaikh.
My name is Nancy Benedict. I live at thirty-one Forest Road in Delmar. I am here to express my support for Resolution Number six point two one point two O R, which is the resolution to promote equity in pedestrian safety and mobility by improving snow and ice removal from city sidewalks, street crossings, and bus stops. The big December snowstorm took place on Sunday, December first and Monday, December second of two thousand and nineteen. We got over twenty inches of snow. Tuesday is the day when we film the Citizens for Public Transportation TV show in the Channel Albany TV studio in the basement of the Washington Avenue branch of the Albany Public Library. I take the number eighteen bus in from Delmar and get off of the bus at the corner of Washington Avenue and Lark Street. Usually I walk down Washington Avenue to the crossing opposite the library where there are two signal lights and two walk lights. On Tuesday, December third, I came carrying two heavy bags. Because of the quantity of snow on the ground, I decided to look at the crossing at the corner of Lark and Washington, but I looked at the area by the curb and determined that it was impossible for a woman my age with two heavy bags to get over all of that snow. I started walking towards the crossing opposite the library. A nice lady came along and offered to help me. I told her that I was walking to the crossing opposite the library. She said that she would walk ahead of me and see whether I would be able to cross there. She came back and told me that there was a big bank of snow and I would have-
You have one minute remaining, ma'am.
Crossing there. There is a, a parking garage between the corner of Lark and Washington and the signal lights by the library. The driveway leading into that parking garage had been plowed. The nice lady suggested that I allow her to carry my bags and we should come out of the driveway to the street and walk, walk down to the crosswalk by the signal lights. I took her suggestion. We walked out of, out the driveway and down in the street to the crosswalk, which is extremely dangerous. Then when I crossed the street at the crosswalk, I had a little trouble, trouble getting over the snow on the side of the street by the library. When I got to the sidewalk, the nice lady gave me my bags back. However, if instead of being a nice lady, she had been somebody who wanted to rob me, I, I would have been in trouble. On Thursday, December fifth, three days after the snowstorm, I got off of the number one bus at Lark and Washington and walked down to the crossing opposite the library. This time I had only one heavy bag, but when I climbed up on the top of the snowbank, I determined that I could not get over the snowbank and down to the street with my heavy bag. So I climbed back down the snowbank to the sidewalk. I walked up to the corner of Lark and Washington.
Excuse me, ma'am, your time is up. Thank you so much. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
My name is Ria Shaikh. I'm an entrepreneur providing tax activity services in Albany. I live at Sen- I live at Sen- Ten Cedar Review Lane, Waterville lead one two one eight nine. In the name of God, the most gracious and the most merciful, peace and blessings be upon you all. Dear Honorable President, Honorable Council Members, and respected community members, standing behind me, I would like to thank you all for the support that you guys have showed us against injustice and human right violations. I stand here on behalf of the Indian Muslims, the Dalits, the Christians, and the marginalized communities to urge the international community to call out India for its relentless attacks on mi- on minorities. The latest spate of violence in Delhi is a reflection of those to come under an avowed Hindu administration violating human rights and religious freedom at a pace rarely seen in the history. In fact, a violation of India's own constitution. Current fascist administration has a track record of violence across the country since its inception, since its inception in nineteen twenty-five, which are not limited to the killing of Gandhi, killing of thousands of innocent souls, especially the two thousand and two riots for which the current Prime Minister Narendra Modi was denied U- US visa for ten years. The Gandhi of India is taken over by the Hinduist fascist under deeply spreading their roots in the US. Few days ago, right during the visit of President Donald Trump, everyone has witnessed, everyone has missed, have, have witnessed massacre in the capital city of India that was undertaken for, for a period of three days, killing thirty, ki- killing thirty-four innocent people, four thou- four hundred wounded, eight hundred families losing their homes, burning down of businesses, schools, and places of worship. Last month, after Indian Parliament passed CAA, United States Commission on International Ri- International Religious Freedom has called the US government to sanction India against Home Minister Amit Shah. I request the US to consider the use of targeted sanctions against Indian officials primarily responsible for the human right violations. If you do not stand up now, the history of the Nazis and the Holocaust will be repeated. I'm confident that the city of Albany and the city council and US and the international community will stand up against any injustice and hate irrespective of the race and religion. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough, we've reached our thirty-minute time limit on this. Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to extend public comment.
In a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Vincent Reguso followed by Dr. Shaikh Ubaid.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Reguso. I live at thirteen Beach Avenue, Albany, New York. I am also a president of Vega Hill Neighborhood Association. I want to come in and oppose Local Law B, which is the CCA, Community Choice Aggregation. I just don't feel that there's enough information out there. This past week, going around getting petitions, I went to many homes and asked them, "Do you know anything about the CCA?" And many of them didn't know anything about it. So that's proven to me that this is not out there for our citizens yet. I can't believe the response that I got from the fifteenth ward that you people here had not gotten the same. I, 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 it's, it's flabbergasting. As I read through Local Law B and read some of the things in here about utilities and, and, and how electricity is produced and all that, I, to me, there's a lot of misstatements in here. And, and again, at my last meeting in February, I had about twenty-five people and one lady was there, her name was Paula Novak, was very vocal about she couldn't believe that the city could take her informa- that from National Grid, take her information and without her okaying. She said she was a National Grid customer for thirty-five years. She picked National Grid and know how does she want to go to a, another utility company? With that information, she called National Grid and free- froze her account. And I, I believe that once this information gets out there, that we're gonna have many, many, many more people freeze their account at National Grid. And after, after this, if this goes into the works and they take, say, forty thousand home residents plus small businesses for away from National Grid, what effect will that have on the employment of National Grid and the offices that make the bills and do all the other work? You can't make me believe that they will retain the same amount of people minus forty thousand customers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reguso. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Dr. Shaikh Ubaid followed by Anne Earling.
Honorable council members, let me start by thanking you all for introducing and deliberating on this resolution, supporting human rights in India. And I would also like to thank my Hindu sister who spoke so eloquently, who carries the burden, which is an unusual burden, that some of her community members have adopted this fascist supremacist ideology. And let me remind you that moderate Hindus have been the victims of this ideology as much as moderate Muslims have been, the victims of their hateful ideologies and, and moderate Christian and moderate Jews also happen to be the victims of their hateful ideologies. Since I last spoke here two weeks ago and also reminded you that Narendra Modi's visa was revoked in two thousand and five, much blood has flown in the rivers of India. A pogrom that was just described by many people in the capital of Delhi, which happened when the president of the United States of America was in Delhi, when the world media was in Delhi, was a clear message. And the news are now just coming out today that there was another pogrom that happened in the state of Gujarat the same time when Trump was visiting Gujarat. And the news have just started to come out. We are founding dead bodies in the drains of Delhi. The number of forty dead is going to increase because more than hundred people are still missing. Just like Hitler gave a clear idea to the world when he went into Austria and annex Austria, then he went into Czechoslovakia and then when finally he went to Poland, it was too late. The danger of Hinduism fascism is much closer and much bigger than we all think. That is why the action that will be taken today by the Albany City Council will be remembered in history. Let me give you an example that when Gandhi was killed, this should have stopped, it did not. When Gujarat happened and two thousand Muslims were butchered and five hundred women were raped, this organization should have been banned, it did not. Recently, when they came to power and just before coming to power, when they staged another pogrom in Uttar Pradesh province, this organization was not banned. And now we saw that with the attention of the world media and the president of the United States being present there, another pogrom had happened.
You have one minute remaining, sir.
And why I say that this danger is bigger and, and closer? Because the infiltration of the Hinduism fascists in the United States. One of the campaign managers of Joe Biden, I'm not just talking about the Republican Party where they have infiltrated. One of the campaign managers of Joe Biden is a friend of Narendra Modi. And another campaign manager for Pete Buttigieg was from this organization. So we have to pay attention to their infiltration in this country. So that is why what you are going to do today will be of historic proportions. Humanity demands it. American value demands it. The city of Albany's tradition demands it. New York State's long, you know, tradition of welcoming immigrants and starting off a justice demanded that you pass this resolution unanimously. And I hope that it, that is what is going to happen here today. Thank you so very much for your kind consideration.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Anne Earling followed by Ahmed Said.
Hi, my name is Anne Earling. I live in Albany and I'm here to speak again in support of Local Law B and Albany joining the RFP for the newly formed Capital Region Community Choice Aggregation. In this, I'm motivated by the climate crisis. Joining the CCA is an efficient way for Albany to lower its carbon footprint. The most recent studies say we need to lower our carbon footprint by over seven percent each year to stave off the worst of the climate crisis. It's not easy to lower carbon emissions by that much. So we need to make use of all of the easy, efficient ways we have to do this. Joining the CCA is an efficient way for Albany to lower its carbon footprint in one fell swoop. Except when we're hearing about really extreme weather or dramatic forest fires, the climate crisis doesn't intrude into our consciousness as much as it should. So there probably are a lot of residents still in Albany who don't see it like the crisis that it, that it is. Some of them may be unhappy about being switched out of National Grid to the CCA rate. Those of us who do know about the climate crisis need to do our best to raise awareness of why we're doing this. Also, some council members may be worried about supporting the CCA before we know what rates will result from the RFP. But voting in favor of Local Law B doesn't bind the city to accept a rate that you don't like. It just makes it possible to get a chance to get a good rate for green energy as part of this CCA. The city will vote again on this before residents get the chance to take advantage of this CCA opportunity. It will be very important for people to know about the connection between the climate crisis and the CCA. We haven't experienced the worst of what we face yet in Albany, but the climate changes in store will be extraordinarily disruptive, expensive, even deadly. We have the chance to lower our risk by moving forward with the CCA through a yes vote for Local Law B. Until people understand the link between the climate crisis and the CCA, it will be good for them to know that switching out of the CCA back, back to National Grid or some other esca will be easy and efficient.
One minute remaining.
During the public education period though, we can also tell customers about other options they can use to save even more money. Community solar farms, through which they'll save ten percent off their CCA bill, and solar for all for income-eligible residents, through which they'll save five to fifteen dollars a month. They can do each of these while in the CCA. Joining a CCA isn't the last step we'll have to take to turn around this climate crisis, but it's an essential step for right now. I appreciate your support for this effort to lower Albany's carbon footprint and protect, uh, us from the worst of this climate crisis. Thank you so much for your work in this area.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Ahmed Said followed by Asma Arif.
Good evening, Mr. President and the council members. My name is Ahmad Said. I'm from thirty-eight Petron Place, Albany. I'm here in support of Resolution twenty point thirty-one dot twenty R, a resolution reaffirming the cities of Albany as a welcoming city expressing the common council's solidarity with Albany's South Asian community and the Indian Muslims, regardless of religion and caste, and opposing India's National Registry of Citizenship and Citizenship Amendment Act. Official reason for NRC is that India needs to handle massive problem of illegal immigration. Official data from UN Global Migration Database and from Indian Census does not support this claim. A NRC can strip citizenship from the people even though they have been lived in India for their whole life. For a child born today, Indian government requires up to two generations of proof of citizenship such as records. Such records are immensely difficult to produce for majority of citizens due to many reasons. And most of the country of this records are required are illiterate and many of them don't have any bank accounts or documents required for proving their citizenship. Indian Muslims on average are poorer than the rest of the population, which makes it even harder to get these documents. The Muslims will have harder time to prove citizenship. Other religion, religious communities will have a reprim due to citizenship amendment- Other religious communities will have a reprim due to Citizenship Amendment Act, which grants citizenship to all religions other than Muslims. The government's position is that Muslims can go to other Muslim countries that might accept them. Note that this doesn't apply to Muslims who cross the border, but to more than two hundred million Muslims living in India for hundreds of years and generations. The CAA and NRC results in discrimination and suppressing rights of minority based on religion. I request you to vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Respected council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Asma Arif. I'm from Two Eighty Central Avenue. And I'm here to speak about, in favor of the resolution against discriminatory law in India. As you know, world today is a global village. The US stand in world politics is pivotal. Values that we enforce have important repercussions for the rest of the world. Our stance in justice and fairness is important to make this world a better place for our future generations. It is shameful that in 2020, human rights are being compromised around the world. Many nations are facing genocide threats like Uyghurs in China, Palestinians, Kashmiris, and now Muslims in India. This will not only threaten world peace, but it will create global economic dismay. The peaceful protesters in Delhi, primarily women and children, are being attacked, burned, and tortured. This Bloodshed and Discriminatory Citizen Amendment Act threatens the existence of two hundred million Muslim population. Mobsters carrying saffron flags are vandalizing mosques, raping women, and setting Muslim properties on fire. One eighty-five-year-old woman was burnt alive. Just think about the post-traumatic stress disorder and the intense anxiety the surviving humans there would face. The recent insensitivities of the US leadership while visiting India is in opposition to our national spirit of fairness and justice for all. I solemnly support this resolution, supporting basic human rights. We stand together for human salvation and condemn implementation of inhuman laws around the world. Please help spread this message of love and deter hatred from this world.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Brittany Orlebeck, followed by Diana Wright.
Mr. President, common council members, thank you for your time this evening. I'm here to speak in favor of Local Law B. For me, it's really, you know, the Public Service Commission has given the city this option to present more options, more choices to those of us who live in the city. I'm at Two Sixty-Five at South Main in Albany. And I think that now is the time for the city to take a leadership role, to provide the option, again, it's only the option, to provide the option of more choice to its city residents. I think that the time for acting on climate change, I think we can all agree, it's not a matter of weather, it's a matter of when. And I think that this is a great opportunity for the common council to allow the city to move forward, again, to create the option for residents to choose a cleaner energy source. Thank you.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Diana Wright, followed by Iwa Sabaka.
Good evening, hello. I'm Diana Wright. I live at Thirty-Six Summ Avenue. And first, I would like to encourage the council to support our Muslim neighbors and pass the resolution that they've been asking for. I think that this is a very important resolution that they're asking for. I am here to ask you to please pass the community choice aggregation that's before you. The gentleman that spoke before that said that he's talked to people who are unfortunately have misinformation about how it works. National Grid is not going to go out of business. They're just going to get their supply of energy from a different source. They'll still be billing, they'll still be maintaining the power lines, they'll still be delivering it. It will just come from a greener, hopefully cheaper, source of energy, which will help reduce greenhouse gases. And it will also help many of the residents of Albany who cannot afford to get solar panels on their roofs, to be able to afford green, clean energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the next speaker? She's here.
Good evening, council members. My name is Eva Sobtchynska. I live at Eighty-Seven Spring Street. I'm an Albany resident, mother of two children that go to Albany Public School, and I'm also on Sustainability Advisory Committee. I am here in support of the CCA, the Community Choice Aggregation legislation. I personally think it's wonderful that our council members are so forward-looking and getting involved in making sure that this can become a reality in the city of Albany. There's a number of reasons why I fully support this legislation. One of the reasons is it offers an opportunity to promote access to renewable energy to all city residents. This is important as it supports the city's commission to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and do its share to protect our climate by ensuring our electricity supply consists of as much of renewable energy as possible. It promotes conversation with the city residents about where our energy comes from, really important point. If adopted, it signals the seriousness of New York communities, so communities in Albany, but also around Albany and other communities across New York State that were serious about our climate change goals. And it shows that the residents care where our energy supply comes from. And I think as more communities across New York State come on board and join CCAs, it demonstrates more broadly that renewable energy is the preferred choice across New York State. So thank you so much for your time, and I hope that all of the present council members will vote in support of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Steve Downs, followed by Lynn Jackson.
Absolutely. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Amberina Al Qader and I live at Fifty-Two Azalea Road, Rochester. I teach at the Rochester Institute of Technology. And this evening, me and my husband, who is here, drove to Albany because the targeting of Muslims that's happening in India as part of the protest against the Citizenship Amendment Act has affected my family, which is in India, in New Delhi. My cousin was arrested and we did not know for fifteen days where he was. He had disappeared. This was in the state of Uttar Pradesh that had seen a state-sponsored genocide that was supported by the current Prime Minister, Narendra Modi. My brother, my mother, my two nephews, my brother's wife, who currently live in one of the targeted neighborhoods in New Delhi, live under constant fear. They are scared for their life. My brother has not gone to work for the past several weeks because he is terrified of taking public transport. Because targeting is happening in neighborhoods, it's happening in public transport. Muslim men are openly being lynched. And the government and the state police has remained silent spectators as all of this has unfolded. My nephew, my four-year-old nephew, has, for the past several times, has not been able to step out of the house. And recently, he refused to go to a school picnic because he felt that there was police all over the streets. This kind of post-traumatic stress disorder for a four-year-old, I cannot even begin to imagine how deep this crisis is. I teach, and as part of my teaching, I tell men and women to hold their heads high and walk with their heads held high. But when I look at the men and the women of my community and the ways in which they are forced and they are sort of denied their human rights, my heart breaks. I'm here to request you to pass a resolution opposing the Citizenship Amendment Act and the NRC and condemning the Modi government for sanctioning the genocide of Muslims in my country. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This will be our, the next speaker will be our last speaker for the evening. So can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Peter Cook.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Peter Cook. I'm the executive director of the New York State Council of Churches. We represent seven thousand Christian congregations around the state. And I'm also a resident of Albany, Forty-One Grayledge Drive. I'm here to strongly support the resolution before you in support of human rights and religious freedom in India. The persecution that Muslims are experiencing in India is extremely tragic. And unfortunately, it's not a new story, but a story that is very old. The Modi government is systematically cracking down on not only Muslims, but many other religious minorities, Dalits, women, unions, all kinds of different groups. And so for this council to stand strongly in favor of a resolution, to stand up to this oppression, is very welcome. I can speak from very personal experience that when I led a group to India in 2018, that nine of the twelve of us were deported from the Indian airport because we were Christian. This is unfortunately a very common occurrence that Christians and other religious minorities experience when they try to enter India. And they are very nervous in India about standing up to an extreme Hindu nationalist agenda which suppresses the rights of all religious minorities and also people who don't even identify religiously. India stands as a beacon for democracy and for religious freedom. It is a constitution that envelops a secular state and does not seek to institutionalize any one religion at the expense of others. Unfortunately, the Modi government is seeking to weaken the constitution and to systematically oppress all kinds of people. So I strongly urge your support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, our public comment period is closed. So my fellow common council members, please, where if you're outside, can you please come back in your seat so we can have a quorum? I don't think we have a quorum right now. Yes, Ms. Daigo?
Look, no, this first portion of public comment is over. But after we conclude our business, okay, we could actually start up public comment again. But it's required by law that we have to finish our business in a reasonable time.
Well, last while we did the sixty minutes now. Because we have thirty minutes for the first half and thirty minutes for the next half. So we just did it all in one. In one slot. But anybody, if you have any written testimony that you'd like to submit for the record, please do that now. Our clerk will take any written testimony you have for any comments that you wish to make. Okay, we have a quorum now. Thank you. Now, moving on to approval of minutes from previous meeting. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer minutes from the February twentieth meeting of the council for approval.
This motion is at a second. All those in favor? Minutes approved. Moving on to considerations of local laws. Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Local Law D twenty twenty and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending Article Three of Chapter Three Thirty-Three of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the filing of application for exemption.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough.
It's referred to Finance.
Thank you. Continue on with local laws held. Ms. Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Local Law B of twenty twenty as amended and ask for its passage and roll call vote thereon.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Can a clerk please read the local law?
A local law enacting a new chapter, One Fifty-Three, of the Code of the City of Albany to be entitled "Community Choice Aggregation" in relation to authorizing the establishment of a community choice aggregation program and providing for the implementation thereof.
Is there any discussion on the local law? Ms. Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, everyone in here is aware of our looming climate crisis, for sure. Whether or not it's affected us directly, uncontrollable fires, more severe storms, report of melting ice caps. It really is undeniable. And all of us, even though as we go about our daily lives, it may be easy to forget, it's something that is going to affect us, going to affect our children and our children's children. New York State has set very ambitious goals. Seventy percent of the power from renewable sources by 2030 and carbon-free power emissions by 2050. It's something to be very proud of. And Albany, as a New York State climate-smart community, and this council, have taken many positive steps over the years. But our involvement in community choice aggregation, also called CCA, really does take our efforts to combat climate change to a new level. Our goal, our overall goal, is purchasing energy from renewable energy sources in bulk at a reduced price, very similar to a buying club. And this will be for residents and small businesses here in Albany. There are thirteen other municipalities who are doing the same. And they're at different points in the process of joining this one big aggregate. This will not affect people who receive HEAP, and it will not affect people who already have other contracts with energy suppliers, also called ESCOs. The CCA program was first approved by the New York State Public Service Commission in 2016. And there's currently two CCAs operating in New York State. And there's many more nationwide. The CCA program's been under consideration in Albany for the past two years when many environmental advocates first began to hold community meetings on the topic. The council unanimously passed a resolution back in September 2018 to pursue and explore involvement in a CCA. This was followed by numerous meetings by city officials to explore CCA. This was followed by numerous meetings by city officials to explore CCA with assistance of officials from NYSERDA, the Capitol District Regional Planning Commission, members of our own Sustainability Advisory Council, and other regional experts. The city proceeded to interview each of the three state-authorized CCA administrators, and they chose the nonprofit Mega Energy, as did 13 other municipalities in the area. We signed an administration agreement to pursue joining the aggregate and allow Mega Energy to begin educating the community of the many benefits of CCA. The next step for each municipality is to pass a local law authorizing the creation of a CCA program, and it spells out how the program will be implemented with community-specific revisions. This plan will be carefully reviewed and approved by the New York State Public Service Commission. Our Local Law B of 2020 authorizes Mega Energy to put out a request for proposals for bids from energy suppliers. The goal is to get bids that beat the price of the average utility cost. That's the goal. It establishes an oversight board to review the bids. The municipality may be offered three different bids and must choose one as a default bid. It could be one bid could be for 100% renewable energy. One bid could be a combination of grid mix. Grid mix is fossil fuels and renewable energy. Or it could be, and in that case, it would be a higher percentage of renewable energy than we have normally with our utility, which is National Grid. Or it could be very similar to what we have with National Grid. Now, important part here is that when we get those bids, prices fluctuate very quickly, so the turnaround's only about 48 hours. And there's 13 municipalities that are also making those same decisions, and they must respond in this very short-time framework. And the most important part is, even if we pass this local law tonight, we get those bids, and we make a decision that this is not in the best interest of citizens here in Albany. Say we, for some reason, we don't get that better price, we still have the opportunity to say no. Most of, we council members deeply appreciate the fact that all of our residents are, you know, are not, many of our residents are low-income. We care deeply about that, so it's something we're going to take very seriously. We also care very deeply about climate change, and we want to move towards 100% renewable So we can make that decision at the point these bids come in. If the city accepts the bid, Albany residents and small businesses will receive an opt-out letter, because they've been automatically, if we've accepted the bid, they will automatically be enrolled. And we're talking about under 30,000 households at this point. They will receive an opt-out letter from the mayor on city letterhead, and they'll have 30 days to respond whether or not they want to opt out. Now, it's important to note that if they don't respond, say they don't respond for another two months. It's important to know that citizens can opt out at any time. But keep in mind, we're not going to accept this proposal, a bid, unless it's in the best interest of our citizens, unless it's a better price than what National Grid is offering us. I can't say that strongly enough. I also want to point out that there'll be education and outreach. It's already going on. We've had 12, I think 12 neighborhood meetings on the issue, meetings throughout the city, and this education will continue even after, say, we've accepted a bid, because we understand this is a difficult topic. If you're like me, you've totally ignored your energy bill and really don't know how they figure it out, and you barely know what a kilowatt is. I finally learned after going through this a little bit more, but I certainly understand how many of, what a difficult topic this is for our residents. So education is extremely important. This oversight board that will be established will continue to meet regularly to review operations of the CCA and report back to the council on a quarterly basis. I should point out, too, that any contract that we accept, a bid that we accept, will be for a period of time between 12 and 36 months. And then, we would review any new contract. I want to point out how important this is. We want to do our part and make a difference to prevent this looming climate crisis. Whatever way we vote tonight, and I'm hoping I have all council members' support, I do want to thank, because we have worked long and hard on this, I want to thank the advocates, the many advocates, environmental advocates, specifically Tina Lieberman and Daniel Kirk Davidoff, who've participated quite a bit in this process from our Sustainability Advisory Committee. I want to thank the committee members from the planning committee for the amount of time we've had many meetings on this, and the other council members, too, who have participated in this process. And I also want to thank the mayor's staff. We've had to work closely with them on this. I want to thank Louise Gaba from Mega Energy and her staff. And I want a special thanks to John Raphael Pichardo, our council attorney, and Michelle Andre, our staff, Danielle Gillespie, everyone who has, we've had a lot of opportunities to make changes. We wanted to make craft the best legislation we possibly could. So again, to my colleagues, I know that there are concerns here. I would appreciate your support tonight. I think it's, I think this is a very worthwhile endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Ms. Farrell?
You fixed it?
Yes, it worked.
Yeah, but I don't, then I'm not Bob Barker, but whatever.
It sounds like it's on already.
Hello?
I think you turned it off.
Is it working?
It sounded like it was on.
I did turn it on.
No, it sounded like it was on already.
It was already on?
It's on.
Okay. Sorry about that. I have constant microphone issues. So my oldest child just recently went to college, and when he was in college, he called me and he's like, "All right, Mom, you're an elected official. What are you doing to save the environment?" Because it comes down to elected officials and on every level, and what are you doing? And I said, "Well, you know, we just did the lights, and that was a big thing." But when it came down to like concrete things that we were doing to save the environment, it feels like there's not a lot that you can do on the local level. You know, there's little pieces here and there, and you should be vigilant, and we should find every piece that we can. But this is actually huge. This isn't, we're getting out of our realm of like just being in this local level and actually making a huge difference in the environment, because, you know, saving, like switching to reusable bags is great. That doesn't even do a drop in the bucket compared to what our electricity uses are. So actually changing this piece to just using a bit more renewable energy is huge. And that will actually, if you want to talk about saving the world, I know at the local level, it feels like we can never save the world. This is saving the world, and this is what saving the world looks like. It's things like this that we do on a regular basis. You know, going to marches is great, and sharing things on social media and the internet, that's lovely, but what matters is action and decisive action, and we have an opportunity to do that tonight. I agree with the concerns. I think everyone that knows me knows how passionate I am about our most vulnerable populations. I fight hard for them. I'm not going to stop. This is, we have the opportunity to still protect our vulnerable populations, and I, there are safeguards, and I, my own personal belief is I would like to see our most concerned council members serve on the panel that oversees the contracts. That, to me, is the solution. So if it's something that we have council members that have very real concerns of things that they want to see in there, serve on the panel. I want you on the panel. You're going to be the advocate that my constituents need. So that, to me, is a possible solution to this. We don't have to, if we pass this, we don't have to agree with the contract. We still have options of pulling out. But it's my understanding that if we don't pass this, then we're done. And so, I think that everybody here has to question, do you want to actually be part of saving the world and doing something that can make a difference for the future of our entire community? Or are we going to keep lagging back? We have safeguards in place. I think that it's a very worthwhile thing to think big picture, think about the changes that we can make.
Thank you. Ms. Daigle? Did I see your hand up?
Yes, I just had a question for the sponsor. You mentioned in your monologue there that you were in discussions with the mayor's office? And for the record, the mayor's office, at this point, is supportive of this resolution?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I know in the past, this council come up with a resolution that sometimes just falls on deaf ears. I just want to make sure she is supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Ballerin?
Yes, sir. I got to be honest. This bill is breaking my heart. It is breaking my heart. It is pulling two of my most cherished values against the show. My value of process and fairness versus my value of the fact that I know we're in a crisis. I mean, we've been in a crisis since 1980. We are slow to make change. So I support renewable energy. I support us being 100% renewable energy. I support us making this change. I don't support process. I have attended every meeting except one, and missed one planning meeting. And I have meant it very clear, made it very clear, as someone who grew up in poverty, as someone who remembers doing their homework on a candlelight, that people look at their electric bills and they look at it as a life-changing bill. The two bills people worry about every month are your rent, with more than 50% of our population, more than 50% of Albany residents are considered house poor, meaning they pay more than 33% of their income on living here. Rent and then keeping the lights on. I remember that. I remember maxing out my two credit cards before I came to college to pay Con Ed to keep the lights on. I remembered that. So when the state says that this is a gamble, when the state makes their presentation that this is a gamble, I can't gamble with people's electric bill. When 25% of my residents, 25% of the Albany residents, still have that same fear that I did, 50% house poor. So I have asked since day one, I've made it very clear, since day one, I've asked that we shift the burden of the risk from the resident, from the consumer, to the supplier. The supplier can do a guarantee. They do it now for people who are on the hit. I've asked for that to be expanded. I've asked for that to be in the RFP. I've asked for that to be in the contract. I've mentioned it at several planning meetings. So it's not as if I come here trying to stop something that's taken a long time and that a lot of people have worked really hard on. I mean, I commend Councilwoman Fahey. I know she's worked very hard on this. I know others have worked very hard on this. But I'm asking, and I've been asking, that the council get a say on the contract. Currently, the council has no say on the contract. It goes to a committee of five, with two council representatives, a representative from the planning department, and two mayor appointments.
No?
Oh, I maybe wrong. I apologize.
A representative from Sustainability Advisory Committee, two mayor representatives, two council representatives.
Yeah, so it goes to a committee of five. It doesn't come back to us. After today, we don't get a say. After today, we don't get to look at what's on the contract. We don't get to look at what's on the RFP. I have a problem with that, and I've said that from the very beginning. I want this to pass. I do. I want it to pass, but I want it to pass where it's fair for everybody. I want it to pass where we are not Gilderlin. We're not. Gilderlin doesn't have a 25% poverty rate. Our median income is $45,000. As someone that this year, it's the first year I get a W9, W2, where I made it out of the 40s, it's hard to live on $45,000. It's hard to take care of your family on $45,000. You look at your electric bill every month when you make $45,000. That's our median income. That's our median income. That's why 50% of our residents are home poor. So this has turned me apart, because I want to vote for 100% renewable energy. I want it to be fair. So I will be voting present on this. And it's only the second time in almost two and a half years of being here that I vote present, because I do believe in taking stand one way or the other. But this time, I have my values conflicting in a way that I don't feel comfortable with the builders in front of us, and I wish we would have been able to make it a bit fair. Thank you.
Ms. Daigle, just address it to me, just to...
I'd like to know if Mr. Allen was supporting the...
Well, that's another discussion, Joe. We can't be having those back-and-forth conversations. I understand. I understand. Councilmember Farrell, you know, she made that suggestion, and the council member, right now, he said how he's going to be voting, so I think we can't have this back-and-forth discussion on this right now? We should have had that early on. So, did I see Mr. Johnson's hand up? Yes. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, respect renewable energy. I respect saving, leaving something for the future to have. But I also have experienced people coming in our neighborhood with the same spill, and it didn't work out for them. Actually, I sold amped energy until the feedback came back and it wasn't what we were presenting to the people. So some of the things that I'm uncomfortable with is that automatically, everyone has opted in. And I think that from the beginning... But I also have experienced people coming in our neighborhood with the same spill and it didn't work out for them. I, actually, I sold amped at energy until the feedback came back and it wasn't what we were presenting to the people. So some of the things that I'm uncomfortable with is that automatically everyone has opted in. And I think that from the beginning, people should have choice because unfortunately, it's going to be a lot of people who is not going to be educated on this and a lot of people are going to be left in the, in the, left behind on it. And, and it's going to be a struggle for them. Let me, let me say this to my, you know, I know what it's like to struggle. I've struggled all my life, you know? I still don't like opening up a, a national grid bill. I still don't like opening up a national grid bill. There's a lot of people that, you know, you either pay your rent in full or you pay partial rent and you pay part of your national grill, your national grid bill. So, you know, when we are projecting things to people that we can't really guarantee, that's problematic. So I respect the effort, the time. I was a, I was a part of many meetings. Some of the people that got up and spoke on behalf of it, I trust everything that they say about renewable energy. I have watched them for the last 14 years and they live it, they walk it like they talk it. But it's a lot of pieces to this that are uncomfortable and for that, it's going to be hard for me to support it. And, you know, I was, I was a part of a lot of those meetings and I voiced my concern about it sounding like a pyramid. And I just feel like, you know, it's too many opportunities where we're forced to make a decision based on a time. And I don't think that that's fair. I don't think that that's fair for a group of people that don't always have time to come to meetings like this. They're not interested in meetings like this. So as their voice, as the person that, if this goes wrong, I'm going to have to answer to this. And I want to be responsible for the group of people that I represent. And so I can't support this the way it is right now. I don't, I think that people should have, shouldn't have to opt out. I think they should have to opt in. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien.
I share the concerns that the last two council members have expressed. And my goal would be also that it be fair. And one of the, I think one of the unfairest things is the largest consumers of electricity in the city of Albany don't have to worry about opting out. They're already excluded from this legislation. And that would be places like the state of New York, the hospitals, the big consumers. They did their lobbying to get out of this whole thing before it even passed the New York State Legislature. So that's a basic sense of unfairness that we're putting this noble, noble venture of going green on the backs of poor people. And that's the unfair thing about it. And like my two colleagues, that tears at me and I think I will be voting present until that problem is remedied. And I, quite frankly, I can't follow the logic of why the council can't be involved in approving the contract, that somehow there's a 48-hour rush on something that's ostensibly going to be a one to three-year contract. I just can't get my head around why, oh, no, the council can't review the contract because it has to be done in 48 hours. I think that's an artificial timeframe.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call? Okay. Since Kathy is the sponsor of the bill, yes?
Thank you. I, I want to start with Councilmember Johnson and his concern about other ESCOs and how they turned out to be not a great deal. This is a different program. We are hiring an administrator to carefully review all the requests for proposals that we're going to receive from all the different energy suppliers, all the different ESCOs. And they're going to, they have, and we sent, and I, this was sent out to all council members. It's a review of the RFP process. And it's a very extensive kind of listing of what they're going to look at with each of the ESCOs that apply to make sure that they choose an ESCO that is, that's going to do what we want it to do, to not have any hidden fees, to, you know, an ESCO that has experience. They're going to look at ESCOs with experience with CCA. They're going to make sure they have the appropriate licenses, certifications, and registrations. They're going to review it to make sure that, you know, their, their operational capability is, is strong, their financial capacity. That's such an important aspect. They're going to look at that. They're going to make sure that, you know, one of the concerns is data security. They're going to look at how they comply with data, their compliance with data security. They will also review pricing and the terms of that, the contract periods, renewable supply options, guaranteed savings options. It's a very well-thought-out plan to make sure that the energy supplier that the aggregate, the CCA chooses is the absolute best. And so it is to avoid the kind of problems that you're talking about. I want to address this whole idea of why just 48 hours. It has to do with the pricing of electricity. These prices are volatile. They go up, they go down. You have to lock into a, a price within a short period of time. And you have to remember that this, our administrator, Mega Energy, is dealing at the same time with 13 other municipalities who are also locking in at the same time. They just don't have the flexibility to extend that period. It's just a matter of the nature of the aggregate and the fact that the volatility of the prices. That is my understanding. I should point out too, our city of Troy has also adopted the idea of an oversight board. City of Troy also has a high level of poverty, perhaps not as high as the city of Albany, but they too are, are using that model. So it's not just the city of Albany. Again, Councilmember Farrell pointed out that, you know, any meeting of this oversight board is an open meeting. Council members are welcome to, all council members are welcome to attend and give their, give their input. And, you know, it is not in anyone's best interest on that board to put forth a, to accept a bid that is not in the best interests of the citizens of Albany. So I, again, those of you who have, are considering to vote present or against, I ask that you please consider voting in favor. And, and I also ask the rest of my colleagues to please vote in favor of this very important legislation that's going to make a difference and improve our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. That being said, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Present.
Conti.
Yes.
Fahy.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Hoey.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson. Kimbra.
Yes.
O'Brien. Nine in the affirmative, one negative, two present.
Thank you, thank you.
Eight in the affirmative.
Eight in affirmative, thank you. Still passes. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to notice an amendment to Local Law C of 2020 in relation to diversity training programs by adding the term disability on the third line after identification. I believe copies have been made available.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. O'Brien.
I offer as an emcee, I ask for majority consent to put on tonight's agenda ordinance number 3.3120.
Is there a second to that motion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Mr. O'Brien.
I notice ordinance 3.3120 and ask that it be held.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read?
An ordinance amending paragraph B and paragraph C of Part III of Chapter 375 and Part VI of Chapter 375 of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the operation of blood plasma centers.
Thank you. I apologize to my council members that I should have did standing reports first. So...
Mr. President, you heard me. The Law Committee will be meeting on March 9th to take on Mr. Conti's Local Law, what is it, C? C, relation to employee diversity training at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell.
The Finance Committee met tonight and we discussed ordinance number 3.1220, 8.2120, 10.2120, and 12.2120. All with the exception of 10.2120 were passed with a positive recommendation and 10.2120 was passed with no recommendation. And we'll be seeing them on the floor tonight. And just Finance Committee members, we are trying to get another Finance Committee meeting, so I urge all of you to respond to Michelle's emails.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Council Operations Committee met on Thursday, February 27th, considered ordinance 34.101.19 in relation to vital statistics fees and unanimously reported that out with a favorable recommendation and also discussed Resolution 11.21.20R in relation to the recognizing the Albany Common Council Legislative Black and Puerto Rican Hispanic Caucus and move that, that out of committee without recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. That being all from standing committees, we'll continue on our agenda on ordinances held. Moving on to Mr. Conti.
Mr. President, I noticed ordinance 34.101.19, request passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance creating a new Article VI of Article IV of Chapter 245 of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to setting the fee for the cost of birth and death records.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. So without getting too much into all of this, so under current law, under provision of the public health law, the, the fees that local bureaus of vital statistics or local health departments can charge are capped at $10 per record. That fee has not been increased since 1991. Actually, in 1991, it was increased from $5 to $10, but has been capped since then. At the same time, the fees that the State Department of Health can charge have gone from $10 up to $30. There are a couple of localities that have received permission to increase their vital records fees at an amount up to what the State Health Department is allowed. Last year, the State Legislature adopted legislation which actually was initiated by prior common council, authorizing the city of Albany to increase their fees up to that amount. The ordinance before us would only increase the fees from $10 to $15. And it recognizes the increased, you know, mandates placed on our Office of Vital Statistics and the costs of operation to try to provide additional revenue to cover the cost of that service. I want to note a couple of provisions in here to address some concerns. First of all, under state law, fees are not charged for birth or death records that are used for school entrance, employment certification, or for purposes of application for public assistance. In addition, the city clerk has the authority and utilizes that to waive the fee in situations where it might provide a financial hardship. I want to note in terms of those localities that have received authorization to increase their fee, Monroe County, which is the home of Rochester, Onondaga County, which is the home of Syracuse, and Tompkins County, which is the home of Ithaca, all increased their fees to $30, which we are not doing. Schimung County increased to $15 and Oswego, the city of Oswego, to $15, which is what this ordinance proposes. In addition, for the city of New York, which is always treated differently as far as health departments go, their, their fees, basic fees are also $15. I want to note another kind of peculiarity with the city of Albany. Because the major hospitals in this, in the area, Albany Med, St. Peters, Alston Memorial, are all located here, every birth and death that occurs within those hospitals, regardless of residents, is registered with our depart, our Bureau of Vital Statistics. What that means is that approximately, based on a, on a analysis that the city clerk did, approximately 65 to 70% of the requests that we receive for vital records are from non-city residents. So it's, 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 as I said, it's because of the way, you know, births are recorded, most of the requests, most of the impact of the fee is against non-city residents. So the committee did discuss that. We had a good conversation with our city clerk. We do have needs based on increased mandates that hopefully this revenue will help offset. And that is why we made, the committee unanimously recommended approval. And so I ask for your positive support tonight as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. My remarks on this issue will not come as a surprise as I've expressed my concerns and also opposition to many of my colleagues in here at caucus and also outside of caucus. Whether it's Arbor Hill or Pine Hills, New Scotland or Washington Park, one thing that our residents have in common is that whenever the city of Albany has an opportunity to nickel and dime, them, they would take full advantage. And for those who are not familiar with the term nickel and dime, it's actually to take small amounts to damage someone. Here in the city of Albany, 80% of our residents are living paycheck to paycheck. With an unemployment rate as, as high as 22% in certain neighborhoods, the median income in the city of Albany is 45,000 and 80% of our seniors are on fixed income. With these facts, I cannot support a 50% increase for individuals to retrieve their birth certificates or death certificates. There are some people that would say, well, councilmen, it's only $5. But to everyday, hard-working taxpayers of the city of Albany, it is a lot, especially given the limited justification for this. This is a basic municipal service. It should not be an avenue to do a cash grab. Our residents are tired of being nickelled and dimed and I urge my fellow colleagues to vote and reject this measure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, first of all, if we were to take full advantage of the authorization, we would be going up to thirty dollars and not up to fifteen. So we're only making a small increase, you know, to cover the costs, additional costs that have been discussed. This is not a basic municipal service because not all municipalities provide this service. We do have a Bureau of Vital Statistics which does this. Bureaus of Vital Statistics are supported by the fees that they charge for birth and records and certifications, et cetera. I do want to note that upon birth, a certificate of birth is provided without cost. So again, just to put that more in clear, you know, perspective, what we're talking about is when someone needs a certification, actually, it's not really a birth certificate, but it's a certification of birth for some purpose. It could be for a passport, it could be, you know, a funeral director for death, or it could be for employment purposes. And then you would need a certification of birth. I actually had to get a certification of my birth a couple of years ago for passport purposes, because what I had was a photo stat, people don't remember that, a photo stat of my birth certificate from the New York City Health Department, and I was applying for passport. That photo stat was rejected. I had to actually, through mail, get my certification of birth. I was going to bring it in because it's not just a piece of paper, but it's printed also on special paper, embossed with the seal of the city on it. So it's not, that's what some of the added costs are. In addition, since nineteen ninety-one, additional mandates and responsibilities have been placed on bureaus of vital statistics or requirements for the production of these certifications, which have increased costs and demand. And again, that's another reason why we are asking for an increase in the fee. So this is, and I just want to again reemphasize the numerous exemptions in state law that already apply, including for school entrance and employment purposes, et cetera, and the authority which the city clerk does exercise in cases where it might be a financial hardship. So again, I would ask your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti.
Can I ask a point of clarification? So can the clerk already grant exemptions to charging the fee for poor people?
Mr. Brian, this is not the time to discuss those matters.
Well, I'm about to vote on it.
It's a, we're on, the vote is on the floor. Ask a council member afterward. Thank you. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
No.
Ballerin?
No.
Conti?
Yes.
Fahy? Farrell? Frederick?
Yes.
Hoey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson? Kimbrough?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Aiden, the affirmative, two negative.
Ordinance passes. Mr. Igo.
Mr. President, I withdraw ordinance forty-six one twenty-two nineteen.
Thank you, Ms. Igo. Now we're moving on to resolutions introduced. Ms. Farrell.
Mr. President, I notice resolution fifteen point three-one point two-zero and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to a title change for certain positions for the twenty-twenty budget.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Refer to Finance.
Thank you, sir. Continuing on, resolution introduced, Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution fourteen twenty-two twenty and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the City of Albany's Common Council calling on the New York State Legislature and New York State Governor Andrew M. Cuomo to provide the City of Albany with its fair share of unrestricted state aid and make permanent twelve point five million in capital city funding.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, Mr. Anani?
One day, one day, one day. Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that my colleagues join me in supporting this resolution, requesting that the state provide Albany its fair share to provide the twelve point five million needed to make sure that our city can continue to operate without putting a strain on the hard-working residents and business owners of Albany, who already pay a great deal in taxes. As an Albany resident, I can say that I'm happy that we are the center of state government. It brings positive economic activity to our city and employs a lot of people to Albany. However, as a resident, one cannot ignore the cost of being the center of state government. Large portion of our space cannot be taxed to generate revenue needed to pay for services because the state occupies majority of the properties. Tens of thousands of state workers, much of whom live outside of the city, commute into our city using our roads and streets and depend on our city government to maintain them without contributing a cent to their upkeep. That cost is paid by us, the taxpayers of Albany. Hosting state government puts a greater cost to the city than the state has compensated us for historically. Even the amount that we are asking for does not cover the cost of hosting state government. Yet, we asked for twelve point five million dollars as a matter of fairness to recognize that our city has a heavy burden that similar-sized cities don't have and that we need the state to act as a partner and better assist the city with the challenges of hosting state government. Some have suggested that this funding request is a handout or bailout, Marlon Anderson, but that is demonstrably false. Albany has done everything it can to cut costs and increase revenue. City government expenditures have been cut year after year. We have asked large tax exempt entities to provide financial assistance to the city as recommended in the state's financial PFM report, only to get commitments from them and not have them follow through. Albany is doing all that it can to strain out its finances, but the truth is that state assistance is needed to close the structural deficit that exists. Without this twelve point five million in state capital funded, our city faces severe cuts that will make it extremely difficult to provide municipal services. Albany is looking at raising property taxes by unprecedented twenty to twenty-five percent if we don't receive this twelve point five million dollars. Or another option would be to go into state receivership, which will cost the state significantly more than what is being requested. These are two scenarios that our residents do not deserve. Our city and state should work to avoid. Our city has proven its case time and time again for the twelve point five million in permanent capital city funding. Hopefully, this resolution, combined with the mayor's and her staff tireless effort to work with the state officials and legislators, to make sure that this act is made permanent state funding a reality, so that Albany can get its fair share and continue to be a good host of state government. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsored.
All members are co-sponsored already. Yep.
Conti? Fahy? Farrell? Frederick?
Yes.
Hoey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of my colleague, Judy Dorchay, I notice resolution seventeen thirty-one twenty R and ask that it be intro'd.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution designating the mayor to act as official representative of the City of Albany to submit annually to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development the annual action plan and amendments thereto under the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to housing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Igo.
Mr. President, I notice ordinance eighteen thirty-one twenty R for passage and ask for a voice vote thereon.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Albany ratifying an agreement of adjustment and release of owner and authorizing the mayor to execute closing papers on behalf of the City of Albany.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Mr. President, I ask for a voice vote to speed things up. We have a lot of people waiting here. Is that okay?
Okay.
We're still doing it?
No, you did, you did. My apologies. We need it, we know the roll call on this one?
I think on the other resolutions, like Mr. Anani's, you can do a voice vote there. It's just executing papers, there's no money involved.
Can the clerk please call the roll?
All right, go ahead, read it for me.
Anani? Ballerin? Conti? Fahy? Farrell? Frederick?
Yes.
Hoey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ten in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Igo.
Mr. President, on behalf of Councilman Flynn, I notice resolution nineteen thirty-one twenty R and ask for its passage at this time. Roll call vote.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Albany ratifying an agreement of adjustment and release of owner and authorizing the mayor to execute closing papers on behalf of the City of Albany.
Any discussion? Seeing none, could the clerk please call the roll?
Anani? Ballerin? Conti? Fahy? Farrell? Frederick?
Yes.
Hoey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Ballerin? Thank you. Since everyone's co-sponsors, we will do a voice vote on this one. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution reaffirming the City of Albany as a welcoming city, expressing the Common Council's solidarity with Albany's South Asian community regardless of religion encased, and opposing India's National Register of Citizens and Citizenship Amendment Act.
Thank you. Discussion on the resolution. Mr. Ballerin?
I want to first and foremost thank the community on this. This is not something that, you know, I can take credit for or elsewhere. This is something that really came from the residents. It came from the ground up. So I, I want to thank you for making us aware of this and bringing this to our attention in a way that we can act. So I want to start off by that. I think, I appreciate all of my council members co-sponsoring this. This is a strong symbol to our community members that we support welcomeness, that we will not stand for any nation or any individual acting against the values of our country and against the values of our constitution. India is a strong ally of ours. They always have been and they are a strong, close friend. But it's our responsibility to tell our friends when they are wrong, just like it's our responsibility to tell our foes when they are wrong. So it is our responsibility to publicly tell our friends when they are wrong. So this is a way for us as a city to make a statement for our federal leaders to take action, but also for our residents to know that we are with you, we will support you, and we welcome you and thank you for being part of our community. So thank you again for all of my council members' support on this. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo same similar sentiments that were shared by my colleague. I support this resolution. Martin Luther King once said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." This city is a welcoming city. We support and we're a welcoming city that will support religious freedom. And the persecution that Muslims are experiencing in India is unacceptable and should be condemned by all levels of government. And I want to thank my colleague Alfredo Ballerin and also members of the community for advocating for this, because again, it could be India today and it could be another neighborhood or another country tomorrow. So that's why it's important to send a clear message that we stand against fascism, we stand for democracy, and this type of behavior is unacceptable. And I want to thank all my colleagues for supporting this. Marcus Garvey once said, "If you find yourself in a whirlwind, I will be there with you." And all my colleagues share those sentiments. We will be there for our neighbors and our friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. All those in favor? Those opposed? Resolution passes with every council member being co-sponsored. Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice the introduction of resolution twenty-one thirty-one twenty R and request that it be held.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the remission of interest and penalties regarding two thousand eighteen property taxes due to the City of Albany for the property located at two eighty-six dash two eighty-eight Lark Street and requesting that the Albany County Legislature pass legislation authorizing such cancellation of interest and penalties.
Thank you. Continuing on to resolution introduced, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution twenty-two point three-one point two-zero R and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to an adjustment in salary, social security, and overtime for certain positions in the Buildings and Regulatory Compliance Department for the twenty-twenty budget.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Refer to Finance.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to resolutions held in our agenda, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution number three point one-two point two-zero R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to an adjustment in salary for certain positions for the twenty-twenty budget APD.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Mr. Ballerin?
Ballerin.
We're on resolution. We're on resolution number three point one-two-two-zero R. Thank you, sir.
Conti?
Yes.
Fahy? Farrell? Frederick?
Yes.
Hoey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution number eight point two-one point two-zero R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the creation of a full-time position which will affect a salary total for the twenty-twenty budget.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin? Conti? Fahy? Farrell? Frederick?
Yes.
Hoey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution nine twenty-one twenty R as amended. Ask for its passage and a roll call vote.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Can the clerk please read the resolution? Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution adopting community choice aggregation program education and outreach plan and customer opt-out letter.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Fahy.
Yes, this is a part of the implementation plan that is unique to the City of, I would say, specific to the City of Albany. And it includes all the outreach that is planned and has been done thus far to help educate the community about community choice aggregation. And this includes up to this point, there's been over a dozen meetings throughout the city for residents and there's all kinds of written material that's been distributed, including posters and other flyers, radio ads, quite a bit of posting on various social media sites. There's a website that's a very important website that helps explain the whole community choice aggregation and the value of community choice aggregation, the city website. And we also have articles in local newspapers and various other press coverage. It also includes a copy of the letter that will be, that if we do go forward, will be sent to residents with information about what the cost is, the fixed rate is, and how to opt out of the process. It also explains, for example, if we choose a mix of renewable and regular grid mix, fossil fuels, if you want to opt up to a hundred percent renewable energy, then residents will have that opportunity. Or, say we, the price was good and we went with a hundred percent renewable, residents will, it explains how residents can opt down to a cheaper price. So, a lot of information in this opt-out letter that will go to neighborhoods and small businesses throughout the city. And I, again, I ask for my colleagues' support on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Conti. Fahy. Farrell. Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution number ten point two-one point two-zero R and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the creation of a full-time position, which will affect a salary total for the twenty-twenty budget ACDA.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani. Conti. Fahy. Farrell. Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
He had to go.
Yeah, we're gonna have to lock the doors. We won't have a quorum if somebody else leaves. Go ahead, just go through, yes.
We still have a quorum.
Igo.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution number twelve point two-one point two-zero R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to an adjustment in salary for certain positions in the Law Department for the twenty-twenty budget.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Farrell.
I would just like to note that the gentleman on the end there is the result of this vote tonight. So, we welcome you and thank you for joining us. We look forward to working with you.
Welcome. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani. Conti. Fahy. Farrell. Frederick.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution sixteen thirty-one twenty R and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Thank you. This is all co-sponsored by every council member, so we'll just do a voice vote on this one. Can the clerk please read the resolution? So, fourteen twenty-two. Go ahead, for the record.
It's sixteen thirty-one twenty R.
Not in our agenda, no. It's fourteen twenty-two point two-O-R.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Yes, fourteen twenty-two twenty R.
Thank you, council member.
That's why we pay you the big bucks, you know? Do I have to repeat that again?
Clerk, please read the resolution.
A resolution supporting Assemblymember Fahy's legislation directing the New York State Department of Transportation to conduct a study on the feasibility of removing Interstate seven eighty-seven and replacing it with a traffic features that will allow easier access to the Hudson River waterfront and provide reasonable traffic operations.
Miss, discussion, Mr. Conti, I mean, Mr. Anani.
Yeah, we're gonna make, I'll make it quick, I'll make this quick. I know people have places to go. Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of Assemblymember Patricia Fahy's legislation to do a study as relates to the seven eighty-seven. While commuters might appreciate the ease in which they are able to commute to and from work here in Albany, ultimately, a growing number of people see seven eighty-seven as a grave mistake that cost our city access to its waterfront. The seven eighty-seven has accelerated our city's decline in population from its peak in nineteen fifty. Across the country, cities are increasingly reexamining their coastal highways and are deciding ultimately to tear them down. As a result, they are seeing new development that increase the tax base and growing tourism opportunities. At over fifty years old, seven eighty-seven is approaching the point where it's going to need major investments needed to continue its safe usage. Considering what other cities are doing with their waterfront, it seems to be more prudent to start with a clean slate. Use the money that would be presumably used to make upgrades to perhaps build a more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly boulevard in this place that will benefit our city more than the existing highway. The study is a great start to establish the facts and strategies before determining our city's position on this matter. We should support this study so that we, as elected officials, as well as the general public, make informed decision about the seven eighty-seven. I urge my colleagues to support this and I want to thank the Assemblywoman for introducing this legislation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Resolution passes. Moving on down the agenda, we do have Commissioner of Deeds, Ms. Farrell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I offer the following names of persons to be appointed Commissioners of Deeds for the City of Albany for the term ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty, and waive the reading of the names.
Is there a second on the motion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Any miscellaneous business? Mr. Anani?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Needing adjourned.